Items. I'll turn it right over to Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first three items on your work session agenda. In conversation with Commissioner John Irwin, I believe he mentioned for item I at your last meeting, the use of the county resources that went into putting that nearly 200-page agenda packet together, and mentioned some possibilities on doing some things online and allowing to have an open discussion about some of that. Because honestly, in predicting, I think our agendas will continue, maybe not to be 200 pages, but will continue to thicken as we go along. So if that's okay, I know that Commissioner John has some information. I'd like to defer to him at this point.
Go ahead.
Well, right now, basically, whenever we've had Carrie, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we had Carrie in the minutes of a meeting that we've been to, Danielle is going to, one, she's going to take it and put it on the Internet. So we are doing this electronically. We are receiving it electronically. Then she's turning around and she's reproducing it. Now, we had that 185 pages. That's going to impact her time and also the expenditure that we're going to have on that copy machine. Now, since we're getting it electronically, I would suggest that as we look through, if there's something that we want to print out to highlight, let us do it on our own printers so that we can cut down on that expense and the time that she's going to be using.
This past agenda that you have is like 125. The agenda you have for today's meeting is 125 pages. It does not include any of the extra minutes from our, like, DSS meetings or any of that stuff that we've received that would normally, we've been putting in there. And I did that on purpose because if I had included all of those other minutes, which I have, for us to kind of discuss and figure out a better way to keep up with those instead of just sticking them at the end of the agenda because there's no real rhyme or reason to them, it would have added another 92 pages with all of the stuff, if I included all the information, like the stuff you bring me, John, and things like that, which is helpful and stuff that we need to have available for people to have access to. But it would have added another 92 pages.
So we're looking at, I believe, a ream of paper is 250 sheets.
100, right.
500.
500, yeah.
500 sheets. So that would be two and a half reams of paper that we're using. Then we are, that is 1,250 pages. Do we own that copier or are we renting it?
Lease it.
We lease it, which means there's a certain number of pages that we're authorized. After that, we're going to be paying for that. So our office expense is going to go up exponentially.
It's all good information because we want to know what everyone is doing in those meetings. It's just, if we could share those as we get them, you know, if an email is sent in, we can send that right back out. And that way, there would be no accumulation of these minutes. And I think that's what you're referring to.
Right.
Is the accumulation of those additional minutes inside the packet.
Since we're putting them on the cloud, I take it. Basically, we're putting them on the cloud.
Now, the, those extra minutes, we have not been putting out anywhere. That's what I wanted to bring up today and discuss. If we set up, like, we have our minutes out there where they can be accessed through the website, we can set them up and have folders for each of the different boards or committee and have it separated. And then it's easily accessible for anybody that wanted to see it.
What about cost?
Minimal.
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 They would just be jumping it from one file to the next.
And I know we've talked about in the past, not necessarily committees that commissioners are appointed to, but you also appoint other individuals to committees. And we've talked about ways in which to encourage citizens to want to participate or be considered for those committees. And if you can break it down, as Danielle said on the website, it gives them an opportunity to read the minutes of those prospective committees that they could too be assigned to. Because a lot of times, you go out and you ask someone, "Hey, would you be interested in serving on this?" Well, I don't know anything about it. Well, here's a link, go look at it, see what you think.
Also, just to give you all a heads up on my last transportation committee meeting. One project that has gone to the head of the line is the Daniel Boone Parkway. Now, the Daniel Boone Parkway is a bypass around Boone, North Carolina. And where people are going to be interested in this, the proposed cost, estimated cost, I should say, is $1.1 billion. It will take all of our highway funds for 10 years. Boone's going to soak it up. Now, there may be a portion of that that we will vote on, that they will have. We don't know, but this is just a projection. So the widening of 93, we can put it in, but it's going to be 11 years before we can have a chance of it. And the public may want to know that and have some input. If we keep on, if we do it by paper, the public's not going to have act, well, we've got to make those arrangements.
It'll be included in the agenda packet, which will require significant scrolling to get to wherever you want to get to.
And that's going to increase, just one, that one committee meeting, that will put it to well over 50 sheets of paper, just on that one.
Plus, some of the things that we get are in color. And it's nice, there's a reason sometimes that they're in color. If they're mats or they've got legends or something, they're easier to understand. And that's, it is more expensive to print the colored sheet than it is just black and white. So, I mean, if there's things in those agendas that you would specifically want as commissioners, you can email me and I'll be happy to, if it's needed for me to print it here for whatever reason. I mean, that shouldn't be an issue. But if, you know, we could cut down on the total amount of pages as 125 for everybody for a meeting instead of 125 apiece, I mean, that would be a significant savings.
Those of us that don't have that capability or don't want to put our printers through that, we can request that Danielle print out the portion that we want.
Yeah.
A hard copy on.
If only two of you requested, that's three we're saving. So, I mean, there's an offset to.
750 sheets of paper.
Any other Timmy comments?
So, I guess my question is, are we talking about, like, the agenda packet? We're just talking about the repeats, like, the minutes?
The Board of Commissioners is separate. So those would be still included. We're talking about the committee meetings and the appointments to committees.
Got you.
To be able, instead of including those in the packets, to be able to provide those online.
Like the ones I see in the, in the COG.
Exactly.
Oh, got you, got you. All right.
I don't know about all the different committees that everybody serves on, but some of the committees, I don't know if they put their minutes on one. I don't know if any of them do or if any of them don't. My concern is, look at Allegheny County. There's a lot of people who don't use the Internet. There's a lot of people, I'm learning, but there's a lot of people that don't know how to use the Internet. And what happens someday, whenever one of these satellites goes down? What happens years from now if somebody goes back and tries to find some minutes that were done electronically and not written? 100, I mean, we've got a pretty good packet this time. I've served on a lot of different committees and some of them have 300 and 400 pages constantly. I like being able to read something, make notes on it. I don't know if other people are the same way. The cost, I don't know what's a sheet of paper now, 2, 3 cents. By the time we buy bulk, I don't know what that cost is. I don't know what her time is. But if we're just basically talking about minutes from another committee, I have no problem with putting those on, on the Internet, in the cloud or wherever.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. I always want to stay with minutes for us, I mean, paper copies.
The Board of Commissioners and any internal committees that you serve on, insurance, recreation, building grounds, whatever it may be, those will be kept paper. But for these, what I call outside appointments, we could take those, upload those to the Internet by file and have those displayed there as opposed to including them in that packet that you're holding up.
I've got no problem with outside committees doing, us doing that. But I just want to be sure we keep a hard copy for us. Then it goes in the master book. You know, we've got those back maybe 100 years from some of the different organizations. Not necessarily the commissioners, but, you know, those get archived someplace, I would hope.
Mr. Chair, the minutes for the commissioner meetings are in the registered deeds office. But now, I do want to clarify, because, like, the agenda, that's not kept and archived anywhere. Only the minutes are archived somewhere. So that would be a whole different animal if that was something that was expected to be being saved, all that information. The only thing kept in the minutes is, in the minute books, is the official minutes that y'all approve. And then, like, the financial information, the line item transfers, anything like that that has action on it, that's included behind it.
And it may be KISMET, but I was going through ancestry.com on the Irwin family. And registered deeds is converting everything to electronic right now. And they had the marriage certificate of Bobby and I's great-great-grandfather from 1840, I believe. So that's, that's going to the cloud also. Even though there will be a book of paper that's going to be there, the public will have access electronically because that will be digitized and put up.
I'm sorry, I just watched Planet of the Apes the other night.
And, and we're talking about.
I don't even know why I brought that up. But things could change. That's, that's not for the minutes.
It's already in there. It's already in there.
It is codified.
Any other discussion on the minutes?
I believe that's it.
Did we want to talk about the video recording?
Right, that was the next item.
Okay. I think, I think we're done with item I. I think we can move on to I squared. All right, so the next item, again, in communication with Commissioner John, we've talked about the minutes, the official minutes of the Board of Commissioners and the meetings. And there was some discussion about whether or not the video and audio recording of the meetings would suffice as the minutes of the meeting. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, there's, there's parts to this. And I think Heather, you were brought into that equation about seeing how that could or could not transpire. So I feel like I'm the, I'm the guy that introduces who's dancing, and then I turn it over to those dancing. So between Commissioner John and Heather, I'll let them do the, do the steps.
Well, we understand exactly what you were asking about. And so I went to the School of Government and said, "Hey, is it possible that we would not have an actual written record of the minutes? Would it be possible to use the video?" He said, "It is possible," but he wouldn't recommend it. And I think his idea of, you know, not recommending it potentially would be for access purposes, which is exactly what you just mentioned, which is some people might not be able to access electronically videos and play those videos and be able to see what's in them. And then at some point, you may end up having to reduce whatever was on video back down to a written form anyway. So I think that's what he was trying to get at. He didn't point me to any specific cases or anything, just that he didn't think it was, you can do it, but he didn't think it was a great idea. I don't, and he didn't say whether it was just because it was in a video form or it wasn't somewhere that it was written, but I think that's what he was implying.
We can always use it as a backup. You know, if we, it's my understanding that you get a copy of the, the meetings DVD. Richard Charles Scott was doing it. He always left a copy, a DVD, of the meetings. So if there's any controversy on the written meetings, there would be that fallback. I would, I would suggest that we do that because the minutes are basically a summation of what's going on. You don't get the back and forth in it. And if anyone has any questions like we're going to have tonight, we can always refer to a DVD and say, "We've got a copy of the DVD of the meeting. If you'd like to watch it, you may." Of course, it's on YouTube now. But not everyone has access to YouTube.
Well, but if they're getting a written form of it from us anyway, it's not going to be a verbatim, word for word. I think the only time we possibly would end up doing something like that might be for litigation purposes if you needed to have a verbatim, something, you know, in writing. But otherwise, it's still just going to be a synopsis of what happened at that meeting, you know, whether we're holding it in paper form or whether, you know, it's, it's the video, I mean.
You know, if we just get a copy of the DVD and keep it on record, I'd be satisfied with that. I think a public would also. The classic example, the classic example we have is the last work session. Well, I didn't say that. I'm sorry, my hearing's bad. Bobby's is worse. But we agreed that's what we heard.
I think it's been some time, but we will, we'll make the request to have those DVDs supplied. I don't recall getting any in some time.
There are some in the manager's office from previous years, but I guess since it's been being put on YouTube, it hasn't been, been requested that we have the DVDs in the office, but we'll do that.
Thank you.
That's fine. Timmy?
No, I'm good.
Any other questions or comments? Next.
Yeah, I'm going to lead us, I'll hype us up and then I'll turn it loose. But CBD and THC products. And I know, again, oops, probably just gave somebody hearing problem. I know that Commissioner John and Heather's looked at this as well, but maybe Commissioner John, if you could kind of lead us in to what you've been made aware of and how.
I was asked a week ago, a couple of weeks ago, if I was aware that there were going to be distributors of CBD and THC at an event in April at the fairgrounds. And I was surprised because I didn't think the state of North Carolina had authorized CBD and THC or, in my ignorance, I just didn't know. Now, THC is the active ingredient in marijuana. We restrict alcohol in the fairgrounds. But here we are, we're going to have an event where an intoxicant is going to be sold. And our ordinance does not cover it. And I believe that it's also going to impact our personnel policies too. Because now, a doctor can write a prescription for THC or CBD, CBD or marijuana. And I don't think we're, we're covering that in our personnel policy. It's not recreational drug use whenever someone has a prescription for marijuana. If I'm wrong, I know we're going to test for alcohol. We will test for drugs. But now we're talking about something that's legal.
April, April Ham, she's our HR. What's our personnel policy say?
Well, when CBD first started coming on the scene, probably back 2019, 2020, we did have some training with our employees before the pandemic hit. And trainings and everything kind of went by the wayside because everybody couldn't be in the same room. We do test for THC levels. That's part of our drug testing. Be post-accident, reasonable suspicion, pre-employment, anything, you know, in that area. We did have some educational material that we sent out to employees about CBD. That, you know, we understand.
We're covered on the personnel side. But what about at the fairground side?
Now, the fairgrounds, to my knowledge, doesn't have any type of policy about that. Now, alcohol, yes, there was some rules and procedures that were put in place several years ago about that. But I can't speak of.
I don't, I don't know that we're completely covered on the personnel side because there's one thing that you mentioned that didn't, if it's a prescribed, which is different, if it is a prescription, that, that, to my knowledge, does not fall under the personnel policy. April, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
If we test after an accident and someone pops positive on, for THC, well, you pop positive for THC, you've had an accident. Yeah, but I, it was legal and I was taking a product last night, not on the job. Whenever we, whenever we get that report back, it doesn't tell us how long ago that THC was consumed.
Can I address? Okay. On our drug policy, substance abuse policy, if anyone, it could be codeine that pops up and a high level of codeine that the medical review officer has found in a sample. And they contact, say, "It's me and I have some cough medicine." As long as I have a current prescription for that medicine, it's legal at that point. If I don't have a current prescription, then you get into the illegal status of it. So it would be, and I, and I don't know specifics about CBD and THC and, and prescriptions that are being maybe written for that. But I know in any panel of our drugs, that's what the, that's what the rule is.
Danielle, is that as far as that goes? Or is there anything below that?
That would cover some.
And the only thing at the fairgrounds.
For medical use reasons.
If we are going, if we're going to turn a blind eye to the sale of THC products that meet the North Carolina standards, which according to the chief deputy is 3%, CBD and THC, then we need to modify this so that we can also allow alcohol at the fairgrounds because they're both intoxicants. Now, I would suggest that we modify that someone could provide samples and be able to sell the product, both alcohol, CBD and THC, but they could not be consumed on the fairgrounds. Because we are, we are giving away, right now, we are, there's a lot of events that we could be bringing into their fairgrounds if we allowed vendors to provide samples and sell their product, but restrict the consumption on the fairgrounds. Remember, we now have a meadery in the county and we have a brewery in the county, which, just to make everybody aware, that's my cousin Brandon is the son of my first cousin, David Edwards, that was murdered. So. Heather?
So there's some, some fine nuances here between what we're talking about. So it is legal in North Carolina to have hemp-derived CBD oil. And it's not 3%, it's .3%. So, and that is legal to sell in this state. That's not a problem. I know they're, they're working on a bill right now that was introduced in '22. And that's making its way. I double-checked on it and has not passed that I know of yet. And that would make manufacturers have to have a license in manufacturing. However, right now, non-hemp CBD extracted from the cannabis plants is illegal under state law. So if you have the CBD oil coming from the hemp plant that does not exceed .3%, that's legal. But if it's derived from marijuana, then that's, it's going to go over that limit anyway. And so there's the problem that we have.
How do you tell where it came from?
I have no idea. And they're trying to, right now, they're trying, the legislators are trying to come up with a, a bill where you, you would be tested. And of course, the problem with that, though, is that depending on the number of manufacturers and where it's coming from, that may be almost impossible to test all of the products where this might be coming from. So you're relying on labels to be truthful in what they're telling you that is in the product. So I think they're still trying to figure that out. But let's see, trying to read, what does that say?
It says basically.
So we were looking to see if medical marijuana, because I hadn't checked on that, is legal in North Carolina.
It says, "In the state of North Carolina, the following medical conditions can qualify patients for medical marijuana." And they are as followed. HIV, cancer, epilepsy, ALS, Crohn's disease, sickle cell anemia, Parkinson's, post-traumatic stress, MS, wasting syndrome. I mean, there's a list of them. And that's, that's straight out of the, I mean, it's not, there are people that would fall under this category of having these certain conditions that, according to here, can receive medical marijuana in North Carolina.
The interesting other part, so there's a lot of statutes that go along with this, but most of them are federal in regards to the manufacturing or sales, you know, of products that might have CBD, whether it's hemp, non-hemp. And there was a farm bill in 2014. I mean, there's the Controlled Substance Act passed in 1970. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors involved. And I think because some states, it's legal and some it's not, that's, you're going to have a bunch of different products. And I'm not really sure how they're going to regulate them appropriately. And I'm not really sure what's going to end up being passed here because it's still back in committees. It's bounced back and forth a couple of times. And they've tried, or they are trying, to have a law in place by July 1st this year. And I'm not sure it's actually gonna, if it's going to work. Because I don't think they've come to all the terms. The committees keep changing things in, in that regulation. So right now, I'm not sure. I mean, it's legal to sell hemp-derived CBD. I mean, it's legal to sell hemp-derived CBD oil of .3% THC concentration or less.
And recreational marijuana is legal in Virginia. And we, look how close we are to the Virginia line. I mean, this is, this is a quagmire.
Michael's just flipping through, and it says that North Carolina is one of only seven states that are left to legalize marijuana. So I, I-
Recreational use.
I think you see the writing on the wall of where that's going. So, and I'm not really sure how the federal government's going to reconcile, you know, the federal law to state laws. I think they're just ignoring it and not enforcing it if you're in a state where it's legal and voters have approved it. And I'm not really sure, I was even reading where they said that if you travel with CBD oil and it's less than that .3%, they don't even pick it up on security in airports now. Because the, the THC level is so low that it's not, it's not hitting their systems as anything that's a problem. So they let it go through. Now, one of the other things that I think is interesting, and I'm not really sure, I haven't done a huge amount of research in this, but there is a note in here, it says CBD in food and medicine. According to federal drug, federal Food and Drug Administration, CBD is classified as a drug. So any, any use of it in food, it's illegal nationwide. But I don't, I'm not, I, there's this distinction between hemp-derived and non-hemp. Because if you can have .3% of THC in hemp-derived CBD oil, then how could that not be in food? I don't understand. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm not familiar with that, and that seems to make no sense. Because if it's less than the allowable limit, I'm not sure why it would be legal to have it in anything else.
Question, who, who checks to see that it says .3%? Is it .03?
Oh, .3.
.3.
.3.
Who, who is authorized to check that?
I think that's the Food and Drug Administration. However, the problem is, they don't have enough people that can check the manufacturing of these products. So, and the state has no ability at this point, and no, no branch that goes through and checks this. Which is why they're trying to introduce this legislation now to pass so that they would have some ability to be able to check. But in several of the stories that I've read, they're not, they don't have the staffing or the funds in order to be able to check this. So they may pass this law about regulating manufacturing, but then I don't know what their mechanism is going to be in order to check that, other than to rely on the truthfulness of what's on the label of the manufacturer or the distributor.
This is interesting, bringing it up, because a candidate for the legislature may see a future that is going to call on a vote in the legislature because this is going to come down. And, and whenever I talked to the chief deputy, he said 3. He didn't know that it was a .3, but he remembered the figure. Not on that, but, you know, I don't know, what are we going to do?
It's like cigarettes, you have to be over the age of 18 to buy the CBD oil that is the, you know, less than .3%. But, you know, I'm not really sure who's checking it. I'm not even sure if anybody was checking to see if, if the CBD oil wasn't being sold last year at the, at the garage sale for people that were located at the fairgrounds. You know, I mean, this is something that we're thinking about now, but how long has it actually been going on where, you know, there, there might have been things that have been sold that we didn't have any idea were actually being sold?
Can the sheriff's department look at these labels and...
How are they going to test? It's going to show up THC in it, it's just, and I don't think they have the ability that I know of to test the amount. They, they might have a way to test that it was positive for THC, but I'm not sure unless there was an actual drug test if they'd be able to figure out the amount. So you're relying on a label. And there's nothing else, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff about, they want to regulate growers. And I know that they do that now, but I don't know how that would be impacted by any legislation that we had that... You know, they, I think they're relying on potentially, not the manpower that they would have to test, but everybody being honest, and if they do randomly test, fining people a very large sum of money. And maybe that would be the deterrent to prevent people from using something or selling something that was manufactured here that would have higher than that percentage, the .3. I don't know yet, we don't, we don't have the legislation passed yet, so.
Go ahead, Michael.
So, if I remember, last year, we had an occurrence at one of the events at the fairgrounds that someone was, I think, selling alcoholic-
Providing samples.
Okay, providing samples. But then you could buy, is that correct?
Could buy, yeah.
Yeah. Which I don't know if that ordinance even covers that. Because if, if you're providing samples, does that not say to consume?
Got to consume it if you're sampling it.
That's what I'm getting at. If you're going to have a sample, unless you're pouring it out on the ground, you're going to consume it. So, and I believe that that individual was asked to stop that process-
Yes.
At that event.
And he left.
Which I believe, he did.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I mean, if we're using that ordinance as a, as a template or a base for this CBD/THC-type deal, I don't know what the plan is for the distributor of this product. But if they too are looking at a, you know, a sample, or if they're looking at something-
I don't think so.
I don't know. I, I don't get, and that doesn't... That, that right there specifically says for a person to consume.
Or possess.
So if you walk in there with it, or you, you turn it up while you're there, it doesn't say by vendor, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't differentiate. If we're going to look at THC and CBD and half alphabet, why are we not starting with what we have and make it all uniform as we move forward? Because if I can get by that one, but I can't get by the, this one, what am I going to do? So why, why, why... And I get it, having a, having a resolution or no, it takes time, I get it. But it sounds like we need to work on both.
I would agree with that, and to me, this is pie in the sky. Because if you don't think that it, there is, there isn't a bottle or a beer or alcohol during the Fiddler's Convention in the trunk of a car or in a camper, you're living in another universe. Because it, it is going on, it is not out in the open. Because of this ordinance, everybody knows, huh, we can't be walking around with an open container. But it's going on. This is why I said that I think we would be better off if we rewrote the ordinance where samples could be provided and purchased, and the product purchased, but not consumed at the fairgrounds. That would open us up to where we can bring some vendors in. As I said, we've got two, we've got two people that are producing the product right now in this county with the meadery and with the brewery up here across from the, from the school. They're making it, why not let them provide samples and increase their business by selling but not allowing consumption?
If you're sampling, you are consuming.
True.
And if there's no limit, the number of samples, if I don't like this one, give me the other one, I want to try it. If I don't like that one, give me another one, I want to try it.
That is, that is possible, but we can say that the size of the sample could not exceed one-half ounce.
That's what the distilleries do in Gatlinburg. You go down there and you can drink 13 different moonshines if you want to. But you can only do that one time. Because they have this high-tech scanning of your driver's license and all that good stuff. But to round about, get back to where we're going, if we're going to, if we're going to prohibit or not prohibit alcohol in some form at the fairgrounds, and if we're going to prohibit or not prohibit CBD or THC or any other acronym that comes along at the fairgrounds, to me, they ought to be uniform in how they are written.
I agree.
Question, right now, we have an ordinance of anybody who consumes alcohol just at the fairgrounds, or does it cover the Veterans Park also? Just the fairgrounds?
It's the only one on record.
And if you could go, you could go down and see the evidence on Monday after, or Sunday and Monday after the soccer fields or games-
We do have an ordinance where we can punish people who break that ordinance with a $50 fine.
Fairgrounds.
The fairgrounds.
That's the fairgrounds. So if, if we're, if there's some appetite to, I think we need to clean this up. That's what you're suggesting.
Yes, sir.
We need to look at all the property that we own. Now-
I'm guessing there's some properties you don't want that to even, I mean, I'm guessing you want that totally restricted.
I'm concerned that if we start saying we'll let people have, give away samples or something, what happens if they want to go to the Frisbee Field or, or Davis Field and do it up there?
What about in your parking lot out here? You want them handing out samples in your parking lot?
I, I just think we need to be careful about this, I'm-
The towns waive their ordinance.
If people want to sample this stuff, go to the place where it's being manufactured. If they like it, they may buy two or three bottles or whatever. But I'm not, I think we just need to be careful what we are proposing to do.
We can also, if we rewrite this, if we decide we're going to let them provide samples, we could also stipulate that they need a minimum of $1 million insurance policy to cover them and the county. We already do that with events anyway. Timmy?
Be completely alone in this, but I like to think about keeping it simple. No alcohol, keep it alcohol-free. There's a lot of young people over at the fairgrounds, and I just think alcohol... I mean, like you say, you start, you open the door for a sample, and then you just keep going down the road, and same thing with the THC and stuff. I know we may lose out on some possible vendors, but that's one of the few places... I mean, I, I go to a lot of sports events and stuff, and you can't go anywhere without smelling pot. And it's, it's just, I don't know, we, we have a lot of young people and a lot of folks that loves to go to the fairgrounds, and I like to, on my way looking at it, I like, it'd be nice to keep it alcohol-free and, and keep it to where it's at place always. But that's-
Other comments?
I don't think you have no, I don't think we should have no alcohol at the fairgrounds either. I mean, there's young kids out there.
I think, you know, if, if we're going to be changing this, we need to include all of our properties.
I agree.
Well, if you're going to make it, and I don't want to use Timmy's words wrong, if you're going to make it simple and just say, "No alcohol on county, any county property", that's one check. Getting back to today, CBD/THC products or anything else out there that pops up. Are you going to stay uniform with the thoughts on the alcohol policy? Or are there different thoughts on that particular thing?
Part of that's Heather's question, what we can legally prohibit and what we can't.
I don't want to take Heather's, but the sale of alcohol is legal in, in North Carolina.
No, I'm saying what we can say legally, what-
You made that stipulation. So you can make a stipulation to the same effect for any of these other products. You made that stipulation, that's your ordinance. Am I wrong?
Exactly.
1995.
Well, sure, and I know we may end up going through some of our ordinances or all of them and figure out what we want to update, but specifically, you know, it's right there. You're restricting that on county-owned property. You know, you can't restrict people in the entire county, but, you know, you certainly are authorized or, you know, if you have an ordinance, you can restrict what is consumed or used on county property.
We can also increase the fine, $50 to some of these peoples, nothing.
I think there's a, there's a limiting statute, I think, for-
I think commissioners are limited, because all the ordinances that I looked at, the maximum fine was $50.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm pretty sure-
I think that's the limit that we have.
That, that has not changed, because they're not doing something illegal, they're just doing something you don't want them to do on your property, the county property. So I think that is still the limit, I don't think that's been increased. And we can just be sure of that.
Somebody making that ordinance is splitting hairs. It's like, who in the world, either you do or you don't? It's like, half of 1% alcohol by volume, and then the other thing saying, well, you can't consume it. How many people you think is going to buy a sample and walk out of there without consuming it?
You know, according to this, you can't even have mouthwash at the fairgrounds.
Off medicine?
Off medicine. Anything with alcohol, eh?
Any other comments?
We need to look at.
I think there's an appetite for the board to look at this and clean, clean this ordinance up, maybe create, add some additional language. What we can-
I agree, it needs to cover-
Restriction camp.
It'll be interesting to see what happens with this regulating of hemp-derived consumables and... I don't even know exactly what that is, but that, this bill is, it's out there, and it's being bounced back and forth. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see exactly what they come up with. And I'm not really sure how they're going to implement it to be able to test the products. I just don't, we don't have, we don't have an ability to be able to do that, but it is in the legislature right now, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. And obviously, if you decided that you wanted to add something to this or change language, that would be something that, you know, I think we could come back to another work session, but it might make sense to have, to print this and then determine what language you do or do not want to see within this, this ordinance or any additions to it.
But the only difficulty with that is the timing that corresponds with the event that, that you identified early on.
There's no way we're going to have this done by that event, so it would give us something to look at and see if it is a problem.
I, I don't, I don't know if the, if the town police department or even the county sheriff's department, I'm not really sure if they're patrolling these events. I, I don't know, you know, I think it's just something that's, it's an event, and they may be directing traffic, but I'm not sure if they're actually in the event, you know, monitoring.
Some of the fairgrounds events, they do walk around. But it's not a continual, they may be there for 30 minutes- they may be there for 30 minutes for a five-hour event, but they, there is a presence occasionally.
Is it, is it the consensus of those present to look at making it basically uniform for both alcohol and these CBD/THC, whatever other products to make the, the proposed changes in ordinance?
Paul?
Yes.
Timmy?
Yes.
As far as consensus goes, yes.
Well, all we can do with consensus is prepare something for review and then go from there.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Carter, next?
The next one and last one is the cable franchise discussion. And this actually came up in one of our budget sessions when we were talking about some of the ordinances that were out there. And the county has or had two cable franchise ordinances in effect in October of 2006. And at that time, they were with Charter Communications and Allegheny Cableist. And those, those franchise agreements, basically in the term of it, had a 10-year rate, which meant that unless something changed, they would basically run until 2016. Now, we are way past 2016. But inside these agreements, it had conditions and it had, you know, terms of the agreement and it talked about the, the company providing the county with a percentage of their quarterly revenues and, and that went on for a while. And April has looked into some of the records and I know that Commissioner John and Heather both have looked, but there may be some limitations that have been passed down through the state that may impact the county's ability to continue or to, I guess, recreate agreements now. And John, it seems like I'm putting you on the spot today, but I'd like to start with you because you have something over there that you read to me earlier that I'd rather you verbatim than I.
Well, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not practicing in law and I don't even play one on TV, but I looked it up and basically I was looking for cable TV. It's Article 42 and this is general statute 66-351 is one of the, 66-350. And what it did, as of January the 1st, 2007, in my opinion, the state of North Carolina started doing, taking over the franchises for the cable companies, which meant that they were going to start to collect in the tax. Now, I asked the Allegheny County TV, Jeff Smith, I said, are you paying this? And he said, yeah, we collect 7% tax and send it to the state of North Carolina. He does not send anything to the county that he was aware of. And believe me, I, whenever it comes to money, I'm sure he would know what's going on. Now, Heather, you looked at this, you're, you're a lawyer. What do you think? I.
I haven't looked at that section. I, I was looking at the actual agreements and I do remember specifically, I remember being, I, I didn't write it, but I was involved in one of the agreements and that had to do with the, the channels that are the community channels and, yeah, ACTV.
Channel 50.
Right, the community and government, right. And I remember that one was created when Don Adams was county manager and the, the county had to be involved in that in order to basically be a pass-through for the money to be paid. Now, that's a little different specifically than, than this and how this franchise tax works here. And I don't think it's, I don't know, I mean, Jeff would know if he ever had a contract with the county for this.
He purchased, he purchased the franchise wait, after this came through. Let me, let me read this, 66-351, state franchising authority, authority, I quote, "The Secretary of State has designated the exclusive franchising authority in this state for cable system service provided over a cable system. This designation replaces the authorization to counties and cities in former GS 153A-137 and GS 160A-319 to award a franchise for cable service." So, they took that away effective January the 1st, 2007. This designation is effective January the 1st, 2007. After this date, a county or city may not award or renew a franchise for cable service."
John, I think it would be helpful to the rest of us if you let Heather finish her comments before making your other. You're going to have plenty of time. It's, you use a hearing aid and I do, it's hard for two conversations. So, let's let Heather finish and then we'll have a rebuttal.
I think that that's good to read that because that's not, I didn't go that far to look to see if there was something that might have repealed what was in these, these original contracts that were done in 2006. So, if, if the statute.
October of '06, two months prior to the change.
Yeah.
Which is crazy.
So, I don't know if they knew it was coming or if it would just be, it was happenstance that it was done, but.
Why don't I provide this to you and let's table it until we can look at it because this is where the peg channels were established also under this statute.
And the peg, but the peg wasn't repealed. That continues because you still need the pass-through and it's required that you have that county that agrees, a county or a town that would agree to do that. So, that's something that I don't think would end because of the requirement in order to get the money for that. Because that, that one is, it's not a, it's not a cable service. They're, they're basically jumping on another cable service to get the channels in order to provide it. But they're getting money and funding through the state from a tax that, that is coming in and the county has to be the pass-through for that. So, that, I don't think we're, we're not talking about the same thing. This would be actual cable companies that are for-profit, not nonprofit like, you know, what we have with the, the communities.
Your recommendation is.
My recommendation is to table until the worthy attorney has had an opportunity to review and discuss with the.
Is that okay?
That's good.
Greg, is that okay with you to table it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table it to, to further, till Heather can look at it a little closer. Mr. Carter, any, what's next?
Probably my confusion, Mr. Chairman, just, just primarily how the county operated in '06 when they adopted a franchise agreement in October, but yet the possibility in January that it went away. That's where my confusion lies.
They collected money even after that, correct?
There's, there's money accountable up till 2020, but that's being looked into to see where that money came from. But it's, I mean, everyone knows how bills are and everybody knows how they're adopted. If we knew this was coming about in January, why did we adopt something October 19th of '06? That just, that's my confusion.
If the statute allows you to have a contract before it's implemented or effective, the effective date, then you would want to have that contract in place. Because if you had it in place, it's not voiding prior contracts. What it's doing is you saying, if it did do away with them, it's saying that you can't do it after that date. So, if you do it before that date, you're authorized to continue to collect that money for whatever the term is of that contract. So, it is entirely possible that because you did it for 10 years, you're authorized to continue to collect that money for 10 years from those cable companies.
But you can't renew it.
Right. So, it's.
State of North Carolina wanted that money.
I would understand, you know, if you think about it, why they would say that it was a, a fee that could be charged by a town or county? Because if you're putting your cables in a right-of-way that is owned by the, the county or, you know, the town, where you're putting your roads and your sidewalks, well, you would want funding if there had to be a disruption for, you know, the, in the right-of-ways. So, I think it, it might lend itself to something along those lines, unless it was just a fee that, you know, was an additional fee that could be used for, you know, financing a county or a town. I mean, my thinking would be is that you're putting your cables and, you know, your service in something that would belong to a town or a county, so you're compensating them for the use of their right-of-ways.
Just like water or sewer.
Right.
Mr. Carter, anything else?
No, sir. Looks like we got off early today.
Anything else, John?
I'm done.
Greg, anything? Timmy? With that being said, I'll call this meeting adjourned and we'll start back at 6 o'clock. Thank you all.